We're going to go with the council members first. And then after, when they're through, then the mayoral candidates. And I've got tentative information. I'm going to have all four mayor candidates as well. Two who have other events and they're going to get here as quickly as they can. The format today is, this forum is kind of going to be a fast and furious. Despite the efforts of some officials, they wanted more time to talk, but we said no. Introduction in one minute, three questions. We've been perusing from the neighborhoods and the community. One minute responses and then a minute closing. With this many candidates, it's going to take about an hour to get that done. Afterwards, we'll have the four mayor candidates, same format. After that will be meet and greet. So when you hear something, we won't be taking questions from the audience, but when you hear something up here that's of interest, please, I want you to go to that candidate afterwards and talk to them. Now, I'll say this to candidates because it's true. I was married to one for quite a while, so I know what y'all go through. I really appreciate that too. And for you all, candidates right now are very receptive. Maybe not as much after an election, okay? They're probably tired, but make sure you talk to them and you touch bases. Tonight, it's all about learning who they are, what they stand for, and what's... Someone moved the chair out of the way there. That's what's late. Okay. So that's kind of the procedure we're going to go with right now. We have a timer up front who has an iPad or high-tech. We're also going to be videotaping this. And we also want to thank K R D O for being present. And also the C S India is present for covering this as well as the Gazette. Here, I touched base with them. The Gazette? Okay, I have some information too for you. And also, our Colorado Springs Police Department. These folks understand, but they're working very bad to call this out. Thank you gentlemen very much. It is appreciated. If you want to sit down, please. And we also have bottles of water up here because you may get tired. Please don't spill them. I'm in trouble if you do that. We have to redo the wooden floor. Okay. Linda, Cindy. Okay. Linda, give me a number between one and 12. I'm trying to fool you. Five? Okay. One, two, three, four, five. We're going to start with number five. We'll rotate in this direction. And we're going to alternate each question every three, back and forth. So at this point in time, I'm going to give you this mic. The timer is right down there. And a one-minute introduction about who you are, where you stand. And then just pass the mic to the next person. And state your name definitely.
So my name is Dennis Spiker. I'm a U.S. Army combat veteran. I moved to Colorado seven years ago. And when it came time for me to leave the military, I chose to stay here because I fell in love with our city. And this is part of the reason I decided to run. Our parks are falling apart more and more every year. And I've not seen anything that this city has done to try to cap the falling apart of our parks. We have needles sticking out of the ground. Families can't even play with their children. And that is one low-cost way where families can go out and do something in the city. My other part of that I'm running on is fixing our economy. I want to see us diversify our economy with more industries like we've already started doing. But I want us to look at manufacturing jobs, more tech jobs. Let's try to talk to Amazon and try to bring them here. Um, that space good? Thank you guys. Dennis Spiker.
Good job on the time. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am Regina English. I am a wife. I am a mother. I am a grandmother. I run a nonprofit here in Colorado Springs. It's a mentorship program for youth, young ladies and young men, all-inclusive. I also represent the county as Mrs. El Paso County. I will be competing for the state title of Mrs. Colorado next month on March 28th. So I'm excited about that. So I believe that as a community, every voice should be heard. And right now, I am a representation of some of the voices that have not been heard. And I just believe that it is very important for there, in order for there to be a team, a leadership team that's balanced and well-informed. There should be diversity, inclusion, and equity. Thank you.
Good on your time. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tony Joya. I am an Army veteran as well. And I have been, spent most of the last decade serving this community, both on the El Paso County Planning Commission and on the city's Transportation Advisory Board. I want to continue serving this community. My main issues that I'm talking about on the campaign trail are affordable housing, homelessness. We're going to talk a lot about those, I think, tonight, so I'm not going to belabor it on those. But another one that I really feel passionate about is getting the people of this city more involved in this decision-making processes of the city. Getting more voices represented. Thank you all for showing up here. I want to get you on boards and commissions in this city. The more voices we have, the better we are at making decisions that actually benefit everybody in our community. So please, vote for me, Tony Joya, for City Council.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming and thank you well and for setting up this venue. My name is Athena Rowe and I'm running as a nonpartisan candidate for City Council. You know, I love Colorado Springs. I've lived here for 20 years, but we do have some problems. You know, homelessness, traffic congestion, collective bargaining, these are, these issues are receiving the lion's share of attention. But my campaign hot-button issue is public corruption because it costs the average household at least 25% of the time, 25% of households and 36% of businesses over $500 billion each year. Price Waterhouse Coopers found that the average person is most likely to be affected by white-collar crime by the powerful, including fraud and extortion, than crime involving violence. My second priorities will be affordable housing, jobs, and homelessness. If elected, I promise to give you my all. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Terry Martinez and I'm a 31-year veteran of the school system here in Colorado Springs. I was a teacher and a principal. I was a teacher and principal at Westside Schools as well. But I was also born and raised here in Colorado Springs, so I have it deep, deep in my heart. My, my three things that I really want, I always want affordable living. I want public safety to make sure that we're able to serve our community. And I want our community to be connected. There's lots of information about how we can do that. Our city continues to need to be able to grow, but we need to do things aggressively and think not just for an election cycle, but for the future, for a generation from now. And really, bottom line, my goal is selfish. I want my three daughters that were born and raised here to move back. Thank you very much. Terry Martinez for City Council.
Good evening. My name's Randy Tuck. I grew up in Colorado Springs. My father moved us out here in 1970. I met my wife here. We raise our sons here. I learned my trade and my career in construction, all my work in life, I'm a general contractor. I actually helped build three of the tallest buildings in town that were sticking out of our city skyline. It was a real privilege to be able to do that. But everything that's important to me in my life, I've gotten from Colorado Springs. That's why I want to concede on City Council. I want to get back this time. I also believe that safety is a huge issue. We have other issues that's facing us. The homeless issue is naturally one, that there's no silver bullet board, but we're going to have to find ways to address it and quick. We're going to have to do it quickly. We can't just let it continue to go and go and not do anything. Not that there hasn't anything done, but at least something that we can start to whittle down the numbers and get people help and also save money for us if we're doing it. At the same time, you know, I, as a citizen, I also live with all the other things that are going around, the things that I've noticed and then I'm passionate about, and that's why I want to be a City Council member. So my name's Randy Tuck. Please vote for me.
We're off and running. I'm Tom Strand and I'm an incumbent on City Council now. I'm a son of a 90-year-old mom. I'm married. My wife's here with me. I have three children and five grandchildren. I've been on City Council since 2015, where I'm a council member and on a number of boards and committees where I'm the liaison. I'm the Chair of Your Utilities Board. When I ran four years ago, I was concerned about our infrastructure, our roads, fixing them. I think we've made some progress. It's been a little bit of a problem on West Colorado. I understand that because I'm a West sider. I wanted to make sure we worked well with the executive branch and we collaborated and we partnered on making this a better place to live and play. And I wanted jobs for our children primarily from high schools and from Pike's Peak Community College, U C C S, Colorado College. Going forward, I want to look more at public safety. I want to fix the homeless situation and I want to make sure that we don't have another wildfire.
My name's Wayne Williams. I'm running for an at-large City Council seat. I'm running for a number of reasons. I want to address three major areas. One of those is infrastructure. Those of you that struggle to get into Amanda Fonda as you cross the construction, that's funded by a Pike's Peak Cartier that I initially put on the ballot when I was a county commissioner. I've also worked to get the first set of expansion for I-25, that's six lanes. I think it's time for us to go forward and look at how we address that again so that we are not having people diverted to our neighborhoods, but instead are driving on I-25. Also want to work on the economic vitality for affordable housing. I served as the Chair of the City's Housing Authority Board and I served on that board for 10 years. Want to actually revitalize that and help us provide more affordable housing in our community. Finally, I want to make sure that we provide the services the growing city needs, including police and fire, by supporting adding the 120 police officers that we're working on. Thank you. I'm Wayne Williams.
Hi, my name is Val Snyder. I'm running for City Council because I want to utilize the experience that I gained when I served on the City Council, 2011 to 2015. With that experience, I will be able to hit the ground running as both a seasoned council member and a seasoned member of the board for Colorado Springs Utilities. Two of the platforms that I want to concentrate on, one is to increase the annual park maintenance budget. Back in 2008, we had a huge cut in the parks. It went from $19 million annual budget to $3. It's now up to $15 million. I'd like to get that up higher so that we can maintain our parks. Parks are very important to family and kids. It's something free that our people have. Another important thing that I want to work on is to accelerate the retirement of the Drake Power Plant downtown. Using the experience that I already have, I can make a huge contribution to that.
I'm Bill Martin. Four years ago, you elected me to represent you. You told me three things very clearly. You want a collaborative City Council. The dysfunction we had prior to that didn't serve us any way, shape, or form. You wanted more transparency. And it's taken four years to get it, but darn it, we're getting closer to it. And finally, you said you want us to make smarter decisions and move towards a more technologically-based decision-making process, delivered on all three. What I'm asking you to do, and I want you to understand, experience matters here, ladies and gentlemen. Okay? We've got a lot, a lot of issues. So far, the last four years, we sailed in tom larks. Next four years might be a little bit more difficult, but all politics are local. So let's talk about local, old Colorado. Let's finish it and let's build on it. It's only the first stage of many. If you want a recommendation, talk to my fellow council members and ask them who they support. Then talk to Andy Thelms, who did the homeless program for the city. When the decisions have to be made, we made them and we will continue to make them. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gordon Klingenschmidt. I am running for City Council because I believe public service is a way that I can fulfill the command, "Love thy neighbor." As a 20-year military veteran, I've already served our community. As an Air Force Academy graduate, as a former Navy chaplain, my programs won six awards, including Best in the Navy, because I took my sailors every day, every weekend to feed the homeless and I care about the poor. I'm also a former state legislator from Colorado Springs. I was twice rated the most conservative state representative from El Paso County by Principals of Liberty dot com. And the reason they rated me that, because in all my votes in the legislature, I consistently voted for lower taxes, smaller government, constitutional liberties, and freedom. I care about these principles. I'm a man of compassion. I am a conservative. My website is GordonForColorado dot com and I ask for your vote.
At this point in time, we're going to transition to some questions. One, two, three. I'm sorry, ma'am. You're first. These questions were selected by the law enforcement team and the homeless resolution team of about a dozen citizens each that are working on actively trying to resolve the issues for a safer and a more secure community. And the questions were picked by them from these 12 that were given to the candidates. So when you hear the answers, candidates had a little bit of time to prepare, just like they would if they weren't elected official. So hopefully in one minute, you'll hear a clear and concise answer. Uh-oh. Thank you all very much for being here. It is appreciated. It's scary too. It's a lot of people out there. The first question is number five. How would you ensure that CSPD's Colorado Springs Police Department wages are kept comparable with other cities our size?
Well, I think that's a really good question. And I think we have to be competitive with our Colorado Springs Police Department's salaries. I, you know, the Department of Justice has a fair amount of grants available, up to something like $6 million a year for office of victims of crimes. And I think that perhaps we could be a little bit creative and apply for some of these grants to help our local police force so that they can maintain competitive wages and so forth and have the funds that they need to do their job.
Are you done?
I'm finished with that question.
Okay. No, it was fast and said Mr. Martinez then. Well done. It was less than a minute. Thank you.
Should get extra credit for that. Just saying. My, my name's Terry Martinez and public safety is my, one of my three priorities. And public safety, not only for the CSPD, but our fire department. We need to continually invest in our community that way. Because as we grow and our needs increase, and you say, priority versus what? Well, that's the problem is that the budget is limited and we need to focus on those things that you are concerned about the most. And as the question showed in, that we got, public safety is one of those. And as I was knocking on 6,000 doors in a previous campaign, public safety was one of those areas that I could show, I could advocate, and I could prioritize here in Colorado Springs. So we do need to find ways to fund, to be competitive with other communities, and to invest in their equipment and their safety for both not only our police department, but our fire as well. Terry Martinez. Thank you.
I'm Randy Tuck. Well, that's a good question because there's a lot of different ways we could probably make certain that happens. But we also are going to have to kind of keep an eye on what everybody else is paying, making certain that our officers receive the funding that they need for their wages because we certainly don't want them worrying about a paycheck and expect them to go out and do the job, actually help keep our community safe. I've always been an advocate for collective bargaining. I think that that's a possibility. We could also look at, like Terry had mentioned, the revenues that we have, we're going to bring into our city, because those are other areas that we can actually gain money from to help pay wages. So I happen to be a proponent for getting recreational cannabis approved in Colorado Springs. I think it's gone far too long that we're letting revenues, million-dollar revenues go out of our city, and that's revenues that we can use to help our city. So I think that those are some of the issues that we could probably touch on and look at going forward.
Thank you.
Stand with Strand. That's me. I've been working with my fellow eight City Council members for the past four years to ensure that the wages of our public safety people, our police officers and our firefighters, are comparable with all the other fire departments and police offices without, throughout the state. Jim Giselle, we all know he's recovering from that terrible situation last year where he's up in Denver now. You know, he almost lost his life over this situation of protecting us, day in and day out. Our, our public defenders, in my opinion, our police and our fire, you know, are out there every day laying their lives on the, on the line for us. At City Council, we have, not what we're going to do, we have raised their wages and we, and I intend to continue to do that so that none of the people feel that they're left out or they're not appreciated.
Thank you.
I'm Wayne Williams. I believe that we need to follow through with the commitment to add 120 police officers. The only way we can do that though, is to make sure that we retain the officers that we, that we hire. That means we've got to make sure our wages and benefits and working conditions are good and appropriate for our community, not just for us, but for elsewhere, recognizing that people may leave and go elsewhere on the front range. So we've got to address that. It's the only way we can do that. It's true for police, it's true for fire. I have a history as a county commissioner of supporting and prioritizing public safety. That's why our sheriff and our district attorney are both supporting my candidacy because they know that I will place that priority there. We can do that based on growth in city revenues. And I support the city's efforts to do that and I will work to make sure we fulfill those commitments and that we make sure that our wages are competitive so that we don't have the type of drain that we've been having. Thank you. My name's Wayne Williams.
Hi, Val Snyder. The question was, how can we ensure that CSPD's wages are kept competitive? What I would do is, is what I learned on council the first time, and that is to work with my other council members to establish the priorities for the annual budget. If we're going to pay these guys more, we have to get more money into budget. I would work with my fellow councillors to set the priorities to fund them more and then take that to Mayor Southers or whomever the mayor is and make sure that that's high enough priorities so that we can ever increase the money that it takes to pay and keep the police force. So basically, I would apply what I learned the first time. Val Snyder.
Bill Martin. When you talk about public safety, think about it for a minute. What are the two, two most important terms? Quality and quantity. Okay? You don't want an unqualified person to show up to your location. And if they don't show up, what's your point? One of the biggest issues we face today is 120, sure. So I was constantly talking to the mayor and talking to the police chief to ensure that in this budget, there were 51 new officers. But it wasn't enough to say 51 new officers. You had to press to ensure that we in fact could recruit and train these 51. I'm not talking about comparable. I want you to have the best police force within known quantity so that when you need them, which is the critical point, and you call 911, they respond correctly and resolve the situation as fast as they can in your best interest. Thank you.
Again, my name is Gordon Klingenschmidt. And as a 20-year veteran, as an Air Force Academy graduate, I support not only, of course, our veterans and our military, but our first responders. We need to be 100% behind our police, our firemen, our medical first responders. This community's safety depends on their ability to respond when somebody dials 911, to be able to respond more quickly. And that requires perhaps that we put, as others have said, 120 more first responders on the streets. I support that. When you look at the city budget, we also have a tax problem. They all said that our taxes would go to fix the roads, that everybody voted for this tax hike. We now pay 8.25% sales tax. It's higher than Denver. Denver only pays 7.65% sales tax. So I think there is a way. If we economize the budget, if we're more efficient about our negotiating and our spending, then we can do both. We can cut taxes, put more police on the streets. We've got to cut the budget in order to do that. We have a spending problem, not a tax problem.
I agree with him there. We do have a spending problem. In our city buildings, in our county buildings, I think it's both city and county problem. We need to remove the sheriff's officers and police officers from riding a desk instead of working at a police station. I'm for increased pay for police officers, but we have to find a unique way of paying for it. Recreational marijuana is one way that the city hasn't used. It's underutilized. Marijuana taxes are bringing in $3 million a year for Manitou. Colorado Springs could do the exact same thing as Manitou with four dispensaries away from schools and churches and better fund our parks and our police officers. Our, our police officers should not be going through the parks to clean up the homeless out of them. I would suggest that we hire a private company to come and do that. One said that they are one quarter of the cost that a typical police officer would be. Again, my name is Dennis Spiker.
I believe that public service is something that's very important to all of us. And we all know in order for their wages to stay comparable with other cities, the revenue has to come from somewhere. And I believe collectively as a city, because major decisions that need to be made, I believe that is bigger than a council. We should all collectively come together in these major decisions and have a say in what that looks like. But it is certainly important for the people that protect and serve us to have the equipment and everything that they need to do their jobs. Thank you.
I'm Tony Joya. I, one of the things we really have to look at when we're talking about making it, making our police officers have comparable pay to other cities our size, is we need to make sure that we're talking about comparable compared to the cost of living. The cost of living in Colorado Springs is going up, so we actually need to pay them more than comparable cities if we're going to retain our officers. Being fiscally conservative in this, in this city, which I'm very proud that we are, we need to make sure that we don't become cheap in how we are paying for, paying for our safety officers. It's incredibly important we pay them appropriately so we can retain them here, not train them up here just to waste all that training money when they run off to a different city. We really, really need to make sure that we're paying them properly so they can have a proper quality of life living in our increasingly more expensive city.
Since you were the first one, thank you for hosting that. One, two, three. Council. It's nice with an odd number because we're going to be rolling around and nobody gets stuck with being the first person to answer or the last one to answer. This question is actually question number four. This question is asked because council is the policy makers. Do you believe recreational marijuana wrecks young minds? Not saying it does or doesn't. This is the question we got from public.
Does? Again, Tom Strand. Does recreational marijuana wreck young minds? I spent five years on the District 11 School Board. Prior to that, I ran a schoolhouse in the, in the Air Force. I had a 30-year Air Force career too. My opinion is that especially with young people, marijuana is problematic. I think there's scientific evidence to show that. I talked to the SROs, the, you know, security police officers that we have in our high schools, whether it's Coronado, you know, whether it's the way we've reconfigured Wasen or Mitchell or Palmer. And they tell me, and I still talk to them, that marijuana has caused incredible problems in those schools. So I do think that marijuana, the availability of it with young people ruins lives. It depends on the individuals. It depends on their support that they have in their homes. But I am not supportive of recreational marijuana in this community primarily because I think that it has such a negative effect on our young people and how they can grow and move forward.
I believe the answer is yes, which is why Colorado voters wisely said that there are age requirements for the use of recreational marijuana. I think it's important that we enforce those age limits. That means that I think our retailers do a good job, both recreational and medicinal. But we have to make sure that the people acquiring it also continue to make sure that it stays in appropriate hands. I think it's an adult decision that adults can make, but I don't think because of the effects that kids should be using recreational marijuana. Thank you. I'm Wayne Williams.
Val Snyder. It's my opinion, retail marijuana with its incredibly high levels of THC, levels which have not really been studied with science to see how it affects the young minds or the older minds for that much. So yes, I think it adversely affects young. I think the high THC levels, we don't really know how it affects. And it should not be so here within the, in the city limits from the retail side.
I'm a very pragmatic individual. If I can walk out this door and down the street and buy wreck marijuana from Manitou, then I have to understand that they can walk back here with it. And that pragmatic understanding makes me consider the fact that you should decide on a ballot issue what you want to do. on a ballot issue what you want to do. All right? Understanding that with any type of agreement on rec marijuana, there's age limits, but then the taxes that could come in could be used for educational purposes. Right now, we are paying for the educational purposes by telling these kids it's not in your best interest. But how many years did I grow up when people said, "Don't drink alcohol," as a child? One of those high school things was they sniffed glue and plastic bags. I mean, a child, when given an opportunity, will make childish decisions. I think you as adults can make the correct decision for the best interests of our community. Thank you.
My name is Gordon Klingenschmidt. As a 20-year veteran, I appreciate the unique aspects of our city that we're surrounded by five military bases, including my own alma mater, the Air Force Academy. I served at Peterson Air Force Base, I served at Shreve Air Force Base. America sends us their best and brightest 18-year-olds to 22-year-olds, and they come here, and maybe you're aware, maybe you're not, but the military and federal law, when you're working on such high-tech equipment, prohibits even one puff of a marijuana cigarette, you're kicked out of the service. We cannot endanger the careers of young people who come here and the military generals who have come, and I'm told they have privately briefed City Council on this, they stand opposed to this because it will have an effect on good order and discipline, and it will hurt our national security. We need to be more respectful of our neighbors. I stand with our troops, I stand with our veterans, and I stand with the homeless. Do we need more of them coming here? They're attracted to the pot. I don't think it's good for our community.
So I do believe that there should be the 21-year-old age cutoff or minimum for marijuana, and that's why we already put it in statewide. He talks about the military bases and how the generals don't want it. Countywide, we still allow recreational marijuana, which include two directly next to Fort Carson. So this isn't just a city issue. We voted on it as a state, now the city needs to be allowed to vote on it for our city for recreational. I don't believe that it is the main cause of a lot of the crime that's being reported. Our crime is going to increase as our population increases, but the number of people, the percent, is lower than it was before. We know that recreational marijuana, when legalized in a city, drives down other illegal drugs. And I would rather see an 18-year-old get their hand on a marijuana joint than meth and fentanyl. Okay, my name is Dennis Feiger.
Regina English. I do believe that it does have somewhat of an effect on our young people, but just as Mr. Murray said, they can go over to Manitou and get what they need and bring it back here. So I believe that as a city, we do need to vote on what we will want, but I do believe that it has an effect, and I don't think it's causing some of these issues we have in terms of criminal activity. It can have, it could, of course, be attributed to that in a sense, but it's not the overall issue. There are so many different dynamics that come into play with that. So I'm not a huge supporter of that, but as a city overall, we can collectively make that decision.
I've seen the effects of marijuana on people throughout my life. When I was in the Army, I was a paralegal, so I actually got to see up close and personal the effects on a lot of our soldiers that I ended up having to put through the legal system of the military when they used it. The fact that we do have so many military here makes it very difficult for us to be able to say okay in our community. It has a very bad effect on young minds especially, but it also has an effect on adults. I don't believe that bringing it to Colorado Springs recreationally, making it more available is the right way to go. It's not just for the military that this is a problem, it's for plenty of other industries within our city. We have a huge DOD presence. We have drivers who aren't allowed to come up hot on any type of drug test. We really don't want to open the door even further within Colorado Springs.
Hi, Athena Rowe, and I like to use facts and statistics. So according to the Center for Disease Control, marijuana is the most commonly used drug in the United States, with over 37.6 million users in the past year, and one in 10 will become addicted. Daily use especially, if it's frequent or in high doses, can cause disorientation, anxiety, and paranoia. Users are significantly more likely than non-users to develop temporary psychosis and long-lasting mental disorders, including schizophrenia. Anyway, and actually, there has been some anecdotal studies that perhaps in adolescence it may increase suicidal ideation. The CDC also confirms that marijuana affects brain development and may reduce memory function and ability to pay attention. That, so therefore, I say, yes, I do believe that it does wreck young minds. I do not support recreational use of marijuana. Thank you.
Terry Martinez. Being an elementary principal and an educator for my entire career, what the question really is asking, should we do all that we can to make sure that kids don't get access? And absolutely, and I think we need to continue to find ways to prevent kids from getting access to recreational or medicinal that's not theirs or black market, because there's plenty of access in Colorado Springs, and all you have to do is drive up Colorado, and you can see access is not the problem. It's really about figuring out ways that we can enforce as a city those rules and making sure that the vendors are following those rules as well. Thank you.
My name is Randy Tuck. You know, when we raise our children, we try to alter that process, we try to give them tools, put them toolbox, so when they go out in this whole world, that they can make the right decisions. Cannabis, especially recreational marijuana, is not the problem, it's the fact that they need to be able to make that decision for themselves and realize that it isn't a good thing for young minds. And I do believe that it is going to possibly do some damage to young developing minds, but that doesn't mean it's bad for everybody, and it certainly doesn't mean it's bad for our city. If we could get recreational cannabis passed, we'll have revenues for enforcement, we'll have revenues for education, we'll have revenues to fight whatever it is coming down the road with regards to cannabis, to do whatever we can to make it as positive as we can for our city. But the bottom line is, is Manitou Springs is taking our profits and our revenues right now and building their city on our dime, and that's not right.
Thank you. And the question, either of you answered it?
I already did.
Answer it again, though. One, two, three. Councilman Murray.
Bill Murray.
Okay, this last question for the council members, and I will need to explain it a little bit to the public. Question is number 12. I'll ask the question, but then I want to explain to the public what's really being asked before you answer, sir. Will you commit to recommending that our Pike's Peak Continuum of Care Governance Board be more community-based, including having more primary stakeholders such as residents and business groups, like many other continuums of care elsewhere? Why or why not? Now, let me qualify that with the citizens. We have a Continuum of Care Board and is composed of a lot of different entities. This group has researched nationally other continuums of care. On the board, the voting members are nonprofits or providers involved in that industry. We do have city, and we have county government agencies involved, but in the information we found there, non-voting. We did not find, basically, business groups, we did not find neighborhood community groups like we found in Tarrant County and others, where we had people that are affected by what's going on in this community having to say, a voting matter, say, in the process. So that's kind of what this question is. And what basically happens is we have the providers casting the votes, and some of the opinions of the public that provided us information was, is kind of like letting kids grade the papers at the school. That's the perception. And that question is here is, would you look at opening up that, so we have better representation of the community that, one, services that industry, two, those that are affected by it as well, residents and businesses, serve?
Thank you. Bill Murray. Really, a fairly simple answer, yes. Now, what happens a lot of times in the military, we have had this problem for a number of years, and individual organizations the same way, we stovepipe the process. And so what happens is a group of these providers get together and talk amongst themselves on the best way to handle your problem. Okay? And it doesn't work for some strange reason, because they didn't ask you. And oh, by the way, if you look at the city in its aggregate, and this is an at-large position, you do realize that we need to look at the entire city, all the tax base that we have, and that's why we've got to be careful how we use it, is to use for the purposes of helping the city. The homeless population is concentrating in the older portions of the city. The city's revenues for the whole city should be used to assist this issue of homelessness throughout the community. So what you need to do is commit, and I will, to ensure that each individual community can enforce and help us explain and answer all of my own. Thank you.
Again, my name is Gordon Klingenschmidt. As a charity leader in this town, maybe you don't know, for the last 20 years, my charity has served the poor. And we served 209 orphans in India, we served widows, I'm a chaplain in three nursing homes in town, and we served the homeless. We gave free coats to homeless veterans last year. I care about private charity and not big government stepping in to solve the problem. I think it's more efficient when private charities, such as Catholic Charities and Marian House, or these groups that are part of the Continuum of Care Board, who are receiving, by the way, federal dollars from my friend, Dr. Ben Carson, who runs the Housing and Urban Development Project, but they are not paid for with city dollars. So when I look at the voting membership, what I notice, first of all, there's an asterisk next to City of Colorado Springs. The city is not even a voting member on this continuity of care. I think that's the first step, is maybe someone, if we're elected to City Council, become a representative and vote on that board.
Dennis Feiger. So how I'm interpreting the question is, I believe, a little different. I think we need to get every community, meaning every district that the City Council currently serves in, involved in two boards like this. I don't think it's just this board. I think every board and commission that the city has should be equally divided between the districts, and the at-large positions should go to experts in that field. For the utilities company, for example, that should have three utilities employees on it instead of three at-large candidates. I think these companies know what they're looking for and how to create it with the best budget, and I don't think that, like I said, the City Council isn't even on it right now. I don't think allowing private companies to continue to run our city, including developers, is the route that we should be going.
I will definitely answer yes to this question, because I believe that on any board, there should be a balance, because you could have more of an informed opinion with people that have actually experienced something in terms of this board, the Continuum of Care. Like, if somebody's actually lived that, they could actually speak to things that are specific when certain decisions need to be made. So I will say yes, there needs to be a balance on different commissioning boards and boards across Colorado Springs, with just a balance of people to where we can make more informed decisions on things.
As I said in my opening, one of the things that I really feel passionate about is that we need to get a wide variety of views on all of our boards and commissions in this city. I do believe it's important to have these pragmatic experts on that board, but they're not the only ones who should be on the board. We have to make sure we're engaging the whole community, engaging, as this group has said, business owners, community members, neighborhood members, people who are actually experiencing the problems on a day-to-day basis. We must have representation from across the community on each of these boards. But that doesn't mean that we get rid of the experts. The experts really know what they're doing, we just don't want to make it so that only the experts are there, because they're the ones who are receiving funds, we need to make sure that there's a check on them as well.
Athena Rowe, and my answer is yes. I do believe that we need to hear more from everybody, as opposed to people who have their self-interests at stake and usually enact laws that favor the administration. So I think that there needs to, there must be a balance. And I think one of the solutions is when we have town hall meetings, I've suggested that you let the people who have the stake, if it's a resident homeowner, let them speak first, as opposed to the experts speaking first, so that all voices do get heard. Because I have been in town hall meetings where the experts come in, they present their views for hours and hours and hours, and wear down everybody who's testifying. I've actually been up at the Capitol, 2:00 AM, ready waiting to give testimony. So I do, yes, I will support that recommending that we include more voices in this Pike's Peak Continuum. I'm sorry, Continuum. Thank you very much.
That's Terry Martinez, and one of the experiences that I bring to this is I work with a nonprofit that does outreach in the homeless community, and not to mention that we actually hosted a gentleman in our home for nine months. The complexity of the homeless situation is very broad, and we need people that are experts. We need people that can serve. These are nonprofits, these are faith-based organizations that serve in this way, but I do believe we need increased involvement, like this evening, for you all to care enough to get involved. And I was here for the meeting that was held here about the 10-point initiative. It evolved over time because of your input, and I think that's the ongoing way that I would do. As a teacher and as principal, I always strove to get more voices into my building, get more parents involved, get people engaged, because that made my schools successful. Thank you. Terry Martinez.
Randy Tuck. I would commit to having more of a community-based care governance board, because when you look at our city and you think about the people who live here, it's only right that everybody that should have a say, have a say when it comes to our city. Our citizens also need to be included in making decisions that make a difference, and also that they might well be affected by. And like Terry mentioned, like the homeless problem, I've always thought that there should be a panel, or I call it kind of like a task force put together, of people that would come from all walks of our community, police officers, people that are in administrative positions, citizens, people that have to do with mental health. Those are the kinds of people that were in need of fight issues, or not fight, actually try to get corrected, issues like the homeless. So I would support something like that. I think that'd be a great idea.
Tom Strand. I've had an opportunity to sit in on the Pike's Peak Continuum of Care meetings over at the United Way. They've got faith-based representatives there, they've got people from nonprofits, they've got folks from the El Paso County Health Department, they've got medical people, people that provide mental health issues. I think this is an issue where it is a public meeting. Any of us can attend these. I think we probably need to advertise it better so that we ensure that you know about it, you can participate, and be listened to. I would certainly support greater advocacy from all of us that deal with this. Their primary issue has been looking at the homeless population, and Andy Phelps, who's sitting in the back of the room representing the mayor, with our homeless population, and now a six-point plan that we finalized, is in fact attends all of these meetings and reports back to City Council about what we can do to support the Continuum of Care. And so I think it's a program that's working, it can work better, and it can work better with your participation.
So I actually did a little bit of research, and there are six purposes the Continuum of Care has. This is the fifth one. Convene a robust forum... Convene a robust forum of government entities, community-based organizations, and citizens to address key needs. What's missing from the current board is one of those legs because it is focused on two of those and it doesn't have that. So I would encourage citizens, I would try to work with the city's public information people to publicize when openings become available so that we can get additional people on the board to represent those views. I did serve on the Reach Pike's Peak Board for a number of years. An organization that works to provide job skills and education for people to move out of poverty and into long-term success so they're not dependent on handouts or government programs. We need to continue to do that. I support the 2019 Homelessness Initiative the city has adopted and is in that process. My name is Wayne Williams. Thank you.
Val Snyder, yes, I will answer the question. I will commit to recommending that the Pike's Peak Continuum of Care be more community-based. To me, it just makes sense to have more primary stakeholders on board like that, people that can give feedback to the board and give them first-based knowledge of how their policies will impact. So yes, we need more people like that.
You were. Do you have anything new to? No, I'm sorry. Okay, okay. One, two, three. Ma'am, okay. Well, I have a question for the audience. These candidates have been very respectful of the time, and when they're through, saying something, they stop and we're a little bit early. We can go. Good, I heard, good. No. I have a question for you. Would you like to hear one more question or would you like to hear a closing comment? We have time for another question.
Question.
One-minute question and one-minute answer.
Question.
Okay. Question, one more. Okay, I'm going to ask the majority. Okay. All those in favor, one more question, please stand. All in favor of going to closing, please stand. Okay, where are we going? No secret ballot. We've got another hour, folks, and we have four mayoral candidates, and that will go really quick. We're almost nearly tied with about a third of the people not standing up at all. So with regard to that, please, what I'd like to do is say that number again.
Question eight.
Eight? That's exactly what Linda said, too. Cindy is one of her chairs, Lynn Shaw is another one of the chairs. Question eight. Do you agree that there are different categories of homeless people, such as the have-nots, the can-nots, the will-nots, and that they each need different responses to successfully address their situation? Yes or no, and please explain.
So I was able to watch a quick video on this, and it was interesting. And I totally agree that there are several different categories, these three being, um, three, have-nots, can-nots, and will-nots. Some people have become comfortable, and they're just okay with just being homeless. Some people really don't have the means or the resources to gain the stability that they need. And the can-nots, I'm assuming that's just the people who can't. They just really can't help themselves get back to some normalcy, and they need people to kind of rally around them and help them do that. So I do believe that there are different categories of homelessness, but I believe together as a city, we could come up with some long-term solutions to help these people. Thank you.
Tony Joya, this is the question I was really hoping you would ask, so I'm glad you got it. There absolutely are three categories, the have-nots, the can-nots, and the will-nots. For the have-nots and the can-nots, I really believe that we as a community can come together to help these people out. I believe we have a moral responsibility as well as a fiscal responsibility to do so. We can help them out by getting them into a stable living situation if they are willing to commit to treatment for any mental health issues that can-nots, for any drug addiction or alcohol addiction issues, and for job training to get them back into a position of self-sufficiency. That's what the have-nots. If they are not willing to do any of that, they're the will-nots, then I don't believe there's much we can do for them, and it might be time for them to move on to another community that would rather have them. But for those that are have-nots and can-nots, it is a moral responsibility and a fiscal responsibility because it'll save us a ton of money on emergency rooms and jail time if we are helping them out.
Well, I agree that there are categories. However, about 40% of the homeless individuals have some type of mental disorder. So that is a bit, a little bit more complex than just maybe three categories. I think that certainly if they have affordable housing for the people who can make something of their lives, then we certainly and should morally help them out. But again, for people with mental disorders, that's a very complex and difficult situation to deal with because a lot of people don't want to go somewhere else, they probably don't want any help, and they can be combative and so forth. So I do believe that there are categories, but I think we should classify them perhaps as those who are mentally ill, and then the 60% that we should help through affordable housing. Thank you.
Terry Martinez, and as I mentioned before, my wife and I aren't theoretically talking about this, but we're talking about how complex this is, and the categories are there. But in reality, my faith brings me to a place that we need to figure out ways to develop relationships, find out who these people are and what they need. And as I was talking to a gentleman earlier as we were wandering around, we can't just give handouts. We need to develop relationship, but that takes more time. It takes more effort. You have to get to know folks for what they need, whether it's mental health services, drug addiction services, maybe it is job skills. But then there are folks that don't want or need anything, and they just want to be nomadic. But my faith calls me to serve those in need. And at this point, as a city council member, I would work with the city, with the faith-based communities to really make this work for all of our community. Thank you. Terry Martinez.
Randy Tuck, wanted to say thank you for everybody for giving us a chance to get up here and speak our mind and what we think we can do to help the city. This question, I think, is, I would say, yeah, there are the three categories. I think the toughest one are the will-nots, the ones that just no matter what happens, they just like living outside, it doesn't bother them. At the same time, they're still breaking the law when they move in areas that they're not supposed to move into. So we have to figure a way around that because it's costing us thousands and thousands of dollars in revenues to clean up after. And believe me, I'm as compassionate as anybody. I can't stand to see somebody living in the cold and not have something to eat. But there are ways to help those people. But the ones that want to continue to break the law, I think we have to find a way to address that. And usually the only way to do that is through the law, and that's why these guys stand at the front door here, because they help protect and they keep our laws in place. And those that break them, they eventually have to pay for it. So I think that we have to be compassionate, as Terry said, but we also have to be, you know, thoughtful towards them and also respectful, but make certain that what we're doing for our city is right, so.
I don't think any of us in the room would disagree that there's these three categories of people, and they all have different stories. And I had an opportunity in January to go with our police department and with our public work employees to a place called The Quarry that you may have read about. Over 150 campers, homeless people, and I had a chance to talk mostly to the males about a dozen of them. And I said, do you know we've got the Springs Rescue Mission and that we've got the Salvation Army where there are low barrier beds? And they looked at me and they said, I don't want to go to those places, they're like prisons, I can't bring my dog, I can't bring my girlfriend, and I don't want to go there. I also asked them about whether they wanted to get help with a job and go to our workforce center in our county. And they said, if I wanted a job, I'd get a job. And so these, in my opinion, are the will-nots, and these are people that I think we need to deal with more strictly, you know, and we need to ensure that they don't make our society less than it can be.
Thank you. I'm Wayne Williams. There absolutely are different categories of people. One of the reasons I was so excited to join the board of what was then the Pike's Peak Community Action Agency, later now known as Reach Pike's Peak, is because the focus is on addressing individual needs. So we have had some people to get out of poverty, they needed some education, to others they needed some job training or job skills, to others they needed a vehicle that could get them to their job that they could obtain if they could just get there each time. And so I think we have to look at individuals and what they need as opposed to a one-size-fits-all system. I don't think that works for any of us. I don't think it works for anyone who is homeless. We have to look at specific causes and needs and address each person individually. There are some that we have to be firm and say, these are the requirements. No, you cannot dump sewage in Fountain Creek, and we have to maintain and follow the rules, but we can reach out to people individually. Thank you.
Val Snyder, yes, I believe there are different categories of the homeless. This was made really evident to me about a month ago. I attended a presentation at the Falcon Police Station, and it was given by the homeless outreach team and by the downtown area reaction team. And they walked us through these categories, and they gave examples of each. They gave examples of treatments for each. And it was really insightful to see coming from their mouths, there's no one cause, there's no one therapy that works, but we need to work as a community, and we need to communicate with these people what is available. So yes, I agree that there are different categories of homeless.
I'm going to take a totally different tact in this thing because the question is, they each need different responses to successfully address their situation. And what's important here is to understand where in time we're talking about. With empathy, sympathy, and honesty, I'll tell you, everyone is treated equally, to include yourselves. And that's what the important issue is here. How do you engage the homeless when you meet them? You can see the hot team walking up. Are you a will-not, can-not, have-not? Sorry, it doesn't work that way, ladies and gentlemen. You don't park here, you don't throw your garbage here, please move on, and you don't harass my citizens here. And that's what we're missing. We treat everybody honestly and sincerely. We address the issue of getting them to the care they need. Okay, it's not for us to make that decision, but to inform them that this is what the law is, it's going to be enforced honorably and equally, okay? And that we're going to resolve an issue that they have helped create. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon Klingischmidt. If I am elected, I commit to working with Mayor Suthers and supporting specifically the Colorado Springs Homeless Initiative. It's a six-step plan. And I commit to working and supporting with our law enforcement who keep the streets safe, and I don't care if someone's homeless or not homeless, they cannot break the law and endanger public safety. Now, having said that, as a man of faith, I remember 20 years ago when I personally started working with the homeless in Colorado Springs. When I was in a park downtown, I don't remember the name of the park, but I remember the man, I think his name was Randy, and he sat under a tree and he was shaking with alcoholism. And he looked me in the eyes and he said, this is not a joke. And it rocked me. It made me realize we need effective alcohol treatment programs, we need to be compassionate for people who honestly they cannot because they're addicted. That's why I'm against legalization of hard drugs. And as a legislator, I worked on this across the aisle with Democrats and the local government committee in Denver.
It looks like I'm going to be the one to wrap this up for us. So the problem isn't just that we have these three categories and that we need to treat them equally. We need to come up with plans for each different category and have more mental health professionals and medical professionals at sites where they have access to to have better case management. If we know someone is schizophrenic and we can put that in a report, when the hot team walks up, they look at it, they ask the person their name, if they're lucid enough, and be able to treat them and get them the treatment that they sometimes desperately need. We have people who are schizophrenic on the streets, we have people dealing with PTSD. We need to look at why they're on the streets to get them off the streets, and a one-size-fits-all doesn't work.
You don't want to answer the question again, do you? No, okay, thank you. Okay. At this point in time, we'd like to go into the closing speech of each individual. And ladies and gentlemen, these folks didn't have to be here to answer these questions, but they did. They took time out of their evening for us, and I want to thank you for being respectful of them as they were for us. So right now, let's go ahead and do their closing, and then we'll give them a big West Side thanks, okay? Okay. See you. One, two, three.
Just the pattern of things. And it's only fair that I get to go first this last round. My name is Terry Martinez, and I'm running for city council. I was born and raised here. I have the community in my heart, and I know that my education, my experience here in this community as an educator, as a teacher and a principal, really helps the city council take that next step to join together, to get community to work together, to connect different parts of the city so that we're not always focused on one particular part. I happen to be a West Sider. You can shout me out a little bit later, that's all good, but in reality, I'm here to represent the whole city. We were born, I was born and raised here, Terry Martinez, and one of the things that I really want is your vote. Thank you very much. Happy.
My name's Randy Tuck. You know, Colorado Springs has given me everything that's important to me in my life, my family, my career. I've met a lot of great people. Everybody that's here has just been great through the whole process. It's also been a learning experience, but I can tell you this, if you'll help get me seated, I will bring new faces, new ideas to the city council. I plan on being the guy that's head on the council that came from the inside the fence. I believe that I have a lot to offer. I also know that Colorado Springs is going to need a lot going ahead into the future. But we need a strong economy, we need a strong and vibrant economy, we need support small business, and we need support, a lot of support and revenues for safety. So being able to address all of those issues is something that the city council and naturally the mayor are going to have to do. But we're going to have to find ways to work together to get it done and also make certain that we have the revenues to do each and every one of those items. And being able to reach out to the community is a huge thing, I think that each and every one of us agree on that. So it'll be a pleasure and privilege to serve you if I get the opportunity.
My logo is Stan with Strand. I'm an incumbent. I live on the West Side in old Colorado City. I'm eighth on the ballot, so you're going to have to check through to get down to number eight. And there are eight reasons that I think you ought to consider voting for me. I'm reasonable, I'm reliable, I'm responsible. I believe that I'm experienced both on city council and utilities. I'm ethical, and you can check, all of our various meetings are televised, you can go back four years and look at our meetings. And I think that I'm concerned and I'm connected with this community, both from young people, my youngest grandchild is five, my mom's 91, I care about all people in between. Please vote for Strand.
Thank you. My name's Wayne Williams. I want to say first thank you for taking your time and coming here this evening. Also want to thank my colleagues that are up here on the stand with me because each of them have given you some really good things to think about. I'm closing to ask you to think about things in a certain way, and that is look at the track record of what folks have done. Colorado was no man's land. By working with the county, the city, and Manitou, we put together the Pike's Peak RDA, which is funding those improvements that no one individually ever would have done. That record of being able to get people to work together and tackling problems as opposed to just punting them is why I to just punting them is why I seek your vote for Wayne Williams for Colorado Springs City Council. There's one other difference, I have been, some of you are aware, in a number of offices in the past serving the people. I'm the only statewide official who gave out my cell phone, it's still 439-1870. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Val Snyder, and I offer a breadth of experience as to serve as a Colorado Springs council member. I'm a twenty-six-year Congresswoman resident. I've worked seventeen years here with community engagement on various Colorado Springs issues, task forces, and commissions. On top of that, I have four years of experience serving on the Colorado Springs Council. My name is Val Snyder, and I ask that you vote for Val.
I'm Bill Murray, you elected me four years ago, and one of the operative terms I use is service after the sale. What most of us come to realize over time is that once you vote for the person, that doesn't necessarily mean they held at the same standards or same promises they made to everybody in the room. And we also need to talk about at large, and what it means is the entire city, and the balance of the entire city's resources in the best interest of the entire city. So when you see shields come up or an incentive award, how do you feel about it? When you see the visitor center, when you see Colorado College hockey and the traffic problems with that, when you see the soccer team and the issues with that, how did your city leaders respond? And it's only when you're in their arena and you're listening to the issues and the person stands up for what they believe is correct, that is the person you should always vote for, because that's the person you can trust to do it again under the same circumstances. Vote Bill Murray, thank you.
Thank you again. My name is Gordon Klingenschmidt. It is the longest name on your ballot, and it's also the top ballot line, you have to skip over me to vote against me, I hope you don't do that. But, listen, I'm the friendliest guy in the room. When I served in the legislature, I have friends on both sides of the aisle, I commit to a cordial, collaborative relationship with every member of council, with the mayor's office, and we're going to solve these problems. I pride myself on being a problem solver. I've earned my MBA, I founded two successful businesses, I've met payroll, I've balanced budgets, and I believe in lower taxes, more freedom, and more efficient government. Better, faster, cheaper government is what the taxpayers deserve. I was twice rated the most conservative state legislator from El Paso County, I was rated a taxpayer champion, you're going to get more bang for your buck, please visit GordonForColorado.com. Again, that's GordonForColorado.com.
All right, again, my name is Dennis Spiker, and one thing that I bring to the city council that I don't believe that the other candidates unfortunately do is that I am young, I am full of energy, and I am the one who's going to speak for the largest growing portion of our population. Right now, the largest growing part of our population are the twenty-to-forty-year-old millennials. That's who's going to come in here and create new ideas, that's who's going to come in and figure out unique ways to, without having to raise taxes. Those are the people that are going to be here in twenty years, thirty years, forty years, and want to see the city laid out for. We're sitting here building up this champions project, which include the Olympic Museum, but we're not ready for it. We're inviting people into our city that we don't have the road capability for them already. The other thing I want to say is I appreciate everyone being up here, I'd say for the most part, I've had really good experience with talking to everyone.
I believe that two characteristics of a good leader is integrity and compassion, and that's what I would bring to the leadership team. I will be completing my master's in public administration, March twenty-seventh. I made the decision to complete my master's in public administration in terms of wanting to better service the community with my nonprofit, but as I got further along in my program, I said, "How can I have a greater impact on my community in a positive way?" So I'm passionate about the people of my city, I'm passionate about change, and when you want change, you vote for change. And I'm here to make a difference, I'm here to be innovative, I'm not millennial, I didn't make the cut. However, there is a group of people that I would speak for, be able to speak to, and so thank you. Regina English.
My name's Tony Joya. I also barely missed the cut on a millennial, but I can tell you, I do support millennials, I married one. So, there you go. I have, to go along with youth and vigor, though, I also have experience, and you can talk to people in this community, they know that they can work with me. I've worked on the El Paso County Planning Commission, I've spent six years there, I've been on the city's transportation advisory board for four years, PPRTA and CAC for three years. I have been around this community, I have worked on real policy issues, and people in this community trust me because of it. I am endorsed by all of the county commissioners, multiple school district members, the CU Regent, multiple city council members. They know that they can work with me even when we disagree, and that's important, because we're not all going to agree with each other every day, but we still have to work together, and I have the experience doing just that. Please vote for me, Tony Joya.
Well, I'm Athena Rowe, and certainly I'm one of the unknowns up here. However, behind the scenes, I've been very active with my organization, the Senate for State Administration Reform. We had a piece of legislation passed at the federal level and signed by President Trump into law in November of two thousand and seventeen that deals with abusive guardianships and fraud, waste, and abuse during a state administration. And I also would like to say that from behind the scenes, I am very cognizant of administrative waste, and I do believe that we need more transparency. And it's also interesting to note that Americans are about seventy-five percent poorer today than they were in nineteen fifty because of regulatory accumulation. I would like to see more money in your pocket, and I will say that age does come wisdom, and if there's three things I absolutely adore, and that is ageism, racism, or any type of isms, period. Athena Rowe, I hope you vote for me and give me a chance to bring a fresh perspective. Thank you.
You almost had another chance. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give this crowd, these candidates, and brave candidates, a clap. Thank you very much.